You all good now?
If you over there gets hot out, you're good now.
Okay.
Me too.
All right. Are we up yet? We'll go back to sleep. We're up?
We're live.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time, I'll call the meeting into order and ask Commissioner Hutchins to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts of gratitude for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. With also heavy hearts, Lord, for the sober events around the world, we thank you, Lord, for strong leadership and ask that you would protect our troops and that your will would be done and lives would be preserved all across the land, the world and our own people. We ask you to be with us today and give us wisdom, and it's in your name that we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the June 10th, 2025 regular session. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, you have the minutes from June 16th, 2025 special session. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Anybody wish to speak? Do we have anybody online? Any comments from online? Okay. Being none, I'll close the public testimony. We have no old business today. New business, the consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, approval of accounts payable?
Make a motion, we approve payables?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, a proclamation for Line of Duty Remembrance Day honoring Tom Ellis White. Trina, you'll say a few words?
Just a few. You know I'm not going to turn down the opportunity to talk.
You're gonna, you're gonna talk.
Well, thank y'all for having me here. Y'all usually see me in a professional capacity, but this morning I'm coming to you in a more informal capacity, representing my family. Dear Commissioners, I'm here today to respectfully request a formal proclamation by the Hunt County Commissioners' Court to designate July 8th, 2025 as Line of Duty Remembrance Day honoring Tom Ellis White. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the line of duty death of my great-grandfather, Chief Tom Ellis White, who was tragically killed on July 8th, 1975 while serving the community of Wolf City and Hunt County. He was a man of deep integrity and commitment to public safety, and he gave his life in the pursuit of justice and protection of others. On this significant anniversary, our family will be gathering for a small memorial service in Wolf City, Texas, to reflect on his life, legacy, and the ultimate sacrifice that he made. We believe it is fitting for the county officially to recognize this day not only to honor his life and service, but also to acknowledge all law enforcement officers who gave, who have given their lives in the line of duty. We respectfully request that Hunt County issue a proclamation recognizing July 8th, 2025 as Line of Duty Remembrance Day honoring Tom Ellis White, so, so that his name and legacy may live on in the hearts of those who he served and protected. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trina.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the family wish to speak? Okay. Commissioners, at this time, I'll read the proclamation. Line of Duty Remembrance Day honoring Tom Ellis White, July 8th, 2025. Whereas Deputy Tom Ellis White served the people of Hunt County with courage, integrity, and unwavering commitment as a law enforcement officer. You know, this is meaningful this year. We lost one of our own this year, Officer Dawson of the city of Greenville. Whereas on July 8th, 1975, Deputy White was tragically killed in the line of duty while carrying out his solemn, solemn oath to protect and serve. Whereas Deputy White's sacrifice represents the highest ideals of public service and reflects the risks faced by law enforcement officers every day in their mission to uphold the safety and well-being of our communities. Whereas July 8th, 2025 marks the 50th anniversary of his untimely sacrifice and provides an opportunity for people of Hunt County to remember and honor his life, his service, and the lasting impact he made on our community. Whereas the county of Hunt wishes to recognize and express its deepest gratitude for the services of Deputy Tom Ellis White and to reaffirm its support for the families of all those who have given their lives in the line of duty. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Hunt County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim July 8th, 2025 as Line of Duty Remembrance Day honoring Tom Ellis White. In Hunt, in Hunt County, Texas, encouraging all residents to pause in remembrance of his sacrifice and honor the legacy of service he represents and recognize the courage of all peace officers who serve with distinction, proclaim the 24th day of June, 2025. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all, Trina. Y'all want a picture with the... Can I get one? Okay. Sorry.
Got it.
Let me find my camera. I don't know why I'm nervous. I know all along.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Action item number two, the Hunt County Holiday Schedule for the year 2026. Commissioners, we got, you should have two, two different proposals. Any comments or questions on it?
So the only difference is just adding a...
Yeah, we had one extra day on, on the one for January 1st and second. That'd be a Thursday and a Friday. Or we can do just Thursday off. One, I think, gives us 13 days. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, one's, one's 13 and one's 12.
You recall how many we had this year?
Uh...
Fourteen?
We bounced between 12 and 13.
I think it was 13 or 14 this year.
13 this year, yeah.
I don't think that there's likely to be a lot of work, activity from the public coming in to file things or such on January 2nd, so I'd, I'd probably lean in that direction. The second, second option.
Obviously with the la, the latest Juneteenth off on Thursday and then Friday, it was, it was pretty scarce around the courthouse and everywhere.
Yeah, it was.
So...
Mark, was that a motion or?
I'll make it a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in second to approve the 2026 holiday schedule that will have January 1st and 2nd as paid holidays. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the interlocal agreement with the city of Campbell regarding, regarding road maintenance agreement on city portion of County Road 4215. Aaron, you gonna brief us on it or?
Nothing really out of the ordinary here on any of the other ILAs that county has done with the small municipalities within the county. Very similar to the ones previously with Campbell. We'll see the other, other cities. I believe a copy was sent out to everybody. I put a paper copy in front of you this morning. I'll entertain any, any questions to it.
Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, set up an escrow agreement account with the town of Portry. Baby, yours.
Court, what this is, is we have a, we already have a interlocal agreement with the city of Portry. What they do now is like if they need potholes repaired or whatever, they'll send me a, a list that they want done and I give them a price. They run it through their city council and then if they approve it, then they bring the county a check for that amount and then we run it through this court and then I do the work for them. Repair potholes, mainly what we're doing. They requested that we do, they wanted to bring over, set up like an agreement just to bring $5,000 over to put in to a, an trust agreement with us. And we'll, what they do is that's gonna save them time from having to go to their, their council every time they want something done. He'll send me over a worksheet that, hey, we need, you know, five holes fixed or whatever. I'll send him an email back that, you know, it's $500 or whatever that price is. It's, all this will be tracked. We're gonna make a spread. I'll have Brittany build a spreadsheet where it's, where it's tracked, where it can be, oh, my mind went blank, where the auditors can check it to make sure that, to track the money right on it, to keep everybody, you know, there's no miscommunication. But I was just gonna see if the court was okay with doing that before I proceed with having Brittany put a spreadsheet together.
So David, is, is the escrow treating it like a not-to-exceed number?
Yes, sir. It's, uh, they just wanted to put 5,000 in it. That was the number they came up with. That would just go into my road material budget. And then once, once he calls or sends me an email, I told him I want everything tracked on email where it's trackable. He'll send me over, I need five holes, 10 holes, whatever they need repaired. I'll send him a, a price back and once he okay's it, then we'll just go do the work. The money's already in that account. And then on the spreadsheet, we'll just deduct $500 or a thousand, whatever that amount is.
So is the, is the accounting done at the accounting level or would it be done at, at your level on the spreadsheet?
It'd be on our level at a spreadsheet, but it'd be backed up by the auditors.
Okay.
And David, is this something, is this agreement set up so that if in the future you do $4,500 worth of work, they say, hey, this is great, can we put, replenish our account, put 10,000 more in it and will it keep going like that?
Yeah, that would be, that would be up to them, the amount that they want to keep in that account.
Got you.
Mary, y'all with me?
We've discussed it, discussed it in our department and it's gonna be treaty, pretty much like a prepayment.
But if everybody's good with that, that's how I'd like to move forward with it.
It's like a draw.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's an excellent idea, David. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will cross County Road 2516 under normal stipulations in precinct two.
Make a motion to approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, widening only County Road 3401 for a width of five feet from rock to oil sand approximately 2,382 feet in length in precinct three. Money is in escrow.
Making to, motion to approve this?
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, widening County Road 3430 for a width of six feet from rock to oil sand and upgrading approximately 1,536 feet in length in precinct three. Money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve construction on 3430?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, Hunt County Development Services' plating fees. Brian?
Morning. Felt it was time to go through and look at the existing fees and make some changes. Where before I consistently dealt with professionals, whether they were surveyors, engineers, or realtors, more so now I'm dealing with John Q., homeowner. And it takes a significant amount of time from my day and from Amanda's day, the, there's just a lot more to be done now that, that wasn't done before and it, it takes significantly more time. So I'm looking at, at trying to, to up the fees a little bit. We, I've also included some fees that weren't there before, such as mobile home park fees, RV park fees, things such as that, which we're starting to see more and more of them and they are very time-consuming. So if you have any questions, I've attached the old fees that, that these would be replacing. So I'll be glad to ask any questions that you may have.
So the variance request fee you're proposing remain the same?
Yes.
And then the replat notification fee you're proposing should remain the same, but you've struck the unused funds to be refunded portion?
I took away the, the refunded portion of the, of the replat, public notice fee. That's a, that's a very time-consuming process. And before, we only charged for the money that was going out to the newspaper for the public notice, to the post office for the certified mail. Well, writing the letters, writing the public notices, getting everything together, getting the addresses together, who to send it to, going back and forth with the newspaper to get the public notice in, it, it takes a lot of time. It's not a, a simple, fast process anymore. So whenever we start taking significant amounts of time out of, out of our day to, to take care of these things, I feel like we need to, we need to, to make sure that, that all, all costs are covered. My goal is to, to not be a burden to any of the taxpayers of the county. I, I need to be self-sufficient. My department needs to, needs to run off of fees collected. It can be done, but we're just trying to get there step by step.
So you were distinguishing the, the difference between individuals and professionals? So this is across the board, though, that, that this cost would go, not just on individuals?
This is, this is across the board. This is a, a uniform, a, uniform up for if the surveyor or the, the professional is doing the submittal or if the, the homeowner is doing the submittal. Anymore, there's not a whole lot of difference. It takes just about as much instruction and guidance for a lot of the professionals as what it does for the people who are teachers or...
So you're saying it's a combination of volume and level of effort to do the job now?
Absolutely.
Just from a historical perspective, you know, the commissioners used to have to do all this themselves. And was it three years ago, four years, four years ago?
October 2020.
Yeah, October 2020. The, the court and commissioners were getting overwhelmed with the number of requests as the county started to grow and the court chose to have the community development created and bring on staff to handle it, knowing that our fees had been extremely low back then and the goal was to get it to be self-sufficient. And especially with the department also handling the Lake Tewahkene P&amp;Z, which those ordinances were done back in the 80s with no fines, no fees in them whatsoever. So in our new zoning ordinance or policy, we will have fines and fees in it with, again, with the hope that those people that are needing those services are funding the department that provides the services to them. And as I spoke at the meeting last week with the 911 addressing, having a GIS person that knows more than, about GIS than just doing addressing for 911 purposes, that as we continue particularly the zoning request, we're gonna need more mapping and the ease of mailing it out with the GIS person. That'll make that mail out a lot easier because they can just go in and identify that real fast on, on the GIS mapping tool. So I think it's a good step to try to get us to be where it's self-sufficient and all the taxpayers aren't having to fund people that are doing, using the services for their own benefits.
Well, and if you go to any city, anywhere USA, and you want to develop, you want to build, you want to put up a fence or anything, they have fees. You have to pay for those services. You have to pay for that department and the, the services that, whatever associated departments have to do.
And most of them are a lot higher than what we're charging here.
We're, we're pretty cheap.
We're pretty cheap.
If you look at Bastrop County's development fees, you might, you might be surprised. They're, they're significantly higher than us.
So they pay for services and a permit in those areas?
It's for everything.
Everything?
Everything. If you call the development department in Kaufman County or Bastrop County or several of these counties, there's, there's a lot of fees involved. So...
Brian, that gets one, one of my questions, just as a point of comparison, how, how do we currently compare to Kaufman County or, or other surrounding counties?
We are higher than, say, Hopkins and Fannin County. We're lower than Collin. On, on pretty good track with Kaufman. Of course, when you look at all these counties, the, the fees will vary, the, the way they have their department structured and the way they have their submittal structured. And their, their fees will be all over the place. It's, it's real hard to compare across the board because the spectrum's up and down. It's all over. So...
And, and so it's, it's been said already, but I'll say it a different way, that the point is to try and get the fees to a point where they're more fairly offset the cost of the services the county is requiring, so that the person who's receiving the benefit of that replat or the subdivision or whatever is the one primarily bearing the cost of that.
That's right.
As opposed to their neighbor who is not.
That's right.
Um, not doing that thing or receiving the benefit from it.
They might even be opposed to what they're doing.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, neighbor, neighbor may not want a bunch of houses next to them, but it, as it sits, they, their taxpayers may, or their tax dollars may be covering some of my costs.
So we're, we're trying to match our true costs for, for doing this so that the expense is borne by the beneficiary of a project?
That's right. I'm not trying to be profitable, but I'm certainly trying to make it so that, so that all of our services and costs and expenses are covered.
That being said, we did adopt this, this schedule we're proposing to change just, just a year ago.
About a year.
And this is a significant jump.
The, the, one that went through a year ago was adding the variance fees.
Okay.
Uh, it was 2023 was the last time that I increased fees and I increased them just slightly. Uh, this is, this is a, a larger jump than what, what it was in 23.
Really, these fees should only just be affecting the developer. It don't really affect average homeowner.
That's right.
Or if they're, if it affects them, they're making money on it, on the deal.
Well, it, it affects the person who's doing the development, whether they're selling for profit or they're, they're selling to, or conveying to benefit family or whatever. It, it ultimately benefits them and it doesn't affect any of the other 120,000 people in the county. So...
And if it's a family that's dividing it, there are no fees. They don't have to plat.
They, they don't have plating or anything such as that unless they're having to build a road or the...
That's what I mean. Really, the only one this cost is gonna affect is a developer that's making money on it.
There's somebody gonna benefit from it, whether it's an individual that's just cutting off one lot to sell it to somebody else to...
They should be making some sort of profit.
You know, to cash their investment in their land into, to a money situation. So if they're, if they're making money off of it, they shouldn't be offended by having to pay some fees to get there.
That's right.
Well, we're providing a service.
Cause we're providing the services.
To the, to the business.
Any other comments?
I think it's a good idea, Brian. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I mean, nobody wants to charge more in fees, but I think it is probably the, the fairer thing to do to people who are not receiving the benefit of this. And, you know, I hope, I, I hope and don't expect we'll be doing, you know, yearly updates, you know, or increases so people can plan for, for ahead. Yeah.
I don't want to do yearly increases. I don't, I don't like that, but if, you know, we've got to do what we got to do to stay on top of it and, and keep it so that it doesn't affect everybody. It just affects the people who need us. So...
Was that a motion, Mark, or?
Sure. That's what you get for opening your mouth. I'll make a motion to adopt the proposal.
I'll, I'll second it.
I got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, the final plat of B. Romaine?
Bearman.
Bear, Bearman?
Yeah, just kind of taxing that one up a little bit. They, they say it a lot prettier than me, too, but...
Okay, in states and precinct two.
Yeah, ours sounds like it's dripping in barbecue sauce. That's all right. These guys came, came back in April and wanted a variance. They've got a slight deficiency in road frontage. So, and it's, it's actually on the lot that they are keeping, so it's not on this, this lot that they're, they're selling. But this is the plat that would accompany that, that variance back in April that y'all granted. So...
All right. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Back over here. Action item 10, final plat of Smith Meadows Estates, number two in precinct three. Why can't they all be Smith or something?
Something, something simple?
Something simple, yeah.
Uh, this is a, a fairly standard plat. Meets all the requirements.
Some questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 11, the final plat of Romaine Estates, or Roman Estates in precinct four.
Simple one-lot plat meets all the requirements.
Questions? Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye. Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody got anything else? Aaron?
Could you give me the executive order number one and two?
Okay. Entertainer motion to go into executive session under items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're in executive session at 10:30.
Let me see if I can...
Now we are.
We're back up? All right, it's ten fifty-seven, we're back in regular session. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to go to executive session under item three.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, the second on the paper say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries, we'll back into executive session under item three at ten fifty-eight.
All right, we're back in regular session. It's 11:56. Is there anything else before the court today? Being none, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 11:57. Thank y'all. How about this afternoon at 2 o'clock?